Good evening. I call the York County School Board meeting to order. This is our first regular meeting of the new school year and we're thankful that we missed the predicted weather that had bypassed us. But we'll now ask our pledge leader if he could step forward while I'll read some information about him. So, our pledge leader Gavin Leitner, fifth grade, student at Seaford Elementary School. He serves as president of Student Council Association and he's been an honor roll student every marking period since the third grade. Gavin's favorite subject is math because you can use it in any job. He's also earned the Citizen of the Quarter Award each year since the first grade. In addition to playing legacy soccer, Gavin enjoys photography, drawing, and skateboarding, and he hopes to one day attend the College of William &amp; Mary or Old Dominion University. So, Fred Warren would stand for him.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Gavin. And next, we're going to go into our recognitions and awards. And we have our seniors of the month. The following students are being recognized for their achievements and we'll start with Bruton High School.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. I have the honor of introducing to you tonight Zachary McKinley. If Zachary would stand and parents, Mr. Mrs. Kirk and Anne Marie McKinley. Everybody stand. Zachary McKinley is one of Bruton's most valuable students. He is an asset not only to the organizations in which he participates, but also to our school. Zachary is a four-year member of the marching, concert, and jazz bands and serves as the brass captain. He plays both tuba and the trombone. When Zach is not leading the band, he is usually serving as a crew leader of our sight and sound. He always makes himself available to help support the numerous activities at Bruton and does so with great patience and excellent consumer service, customer service. He is an asset to this team. Zach is currently working to complete his Eagle Scout project. He has worked with Greg Dolak on a fire and life safety project for schools in the Bruton area. He loves playing lacrosse and has played this sport every year since kindergarten. For the past four years, he has been a member of the Jamestown Lacrosse Club. Additionally, he serves as youth group leader and choir member at Saint Jerome Catholic Church. Next fall, Zach hopes to attend VMI or Hampton-Sidney College to major in political science or government and play lacrosse. He aspires to become a lawyer. We are very proud of all of Zach's accomplishments and we look forward to all of his future accomplishments. Please join me in congratulating Zachary McKinley as Bruton Senior of the Month.
Thank you. And I have the next one, Grafton High School, Abby Sworsex. Is Abby here? Yeah, stand up with your parents. Yeah, it's Jennifer and John Sworsex are with her. We're pleased to recognize Abby Sworsex as Grafton High School's September Senior of the Month. Abby is an active student at Grafton High School and is dedicated to her studies. She's been involved in school leadership since 10th grade when she served as class treasurer. She moved to class secretary during her junior year and is now serving as her class president during her senior year. Abby has participated in multiple leadership conferences across the state over the past three years. She's a member of the National Honor Society, Math Honor Society, and the Spanish Honor Society. Abby has earned highest honors every quarter and is the top, in the top 10 percent of her class. Abby has also balanced this with her participation in both soccer and field hockey. She's been on the varsity field hockey team since the ninth grade and is now serving in a leadership role as captain of their team. Abby enjoys working with students and mentored an eighth grade class last year by helping them with their writing and other instructional tasks in the classroom. When Abby is not involved in academics or athletics, she can be found hiking, mountain biking, water skiing, snow skiing, or hanging out with her friends or family. Abby is looking to attend either Virginia Tech or the University of Florida to pursue a degree in either business or law. Abby truly serves as a role model to all students at Grafton High School and we are honored to have her to be our Senior of the Month. Congratulations. Was there someone else here with you Abby that didn't stand up, a part of your family?
He had to stand now.
I couldn't see him with the podium. Can he stand up for just a second?
Abby's brother. Okay.
I apologize for that. The podium blocked you there, so apologize for that. So, we'll move on to our next senior month and it's Mr. Medford, you have it?
York High School.
Yes.
I do. It's going to be Mary Nell and Rashlo. Did I get that right? And your mom and dad?
Rashlo.
Rashlo? I know it's going to mess that up, sorry. York High School is pleased to have Mary as the September Senior of the Month. Mary is a stellar student and the most deserving of this honor. She has received highest honors for the past three years. She also holds membership in the French National Honor Society, National Honor Society, and the Tri-M Music Honor Society. Mary has been connected to the York community since her ninth grade year. She played junior varsity field hockey for two years and has played on the varsity girls' soccer team for the past three years. She is a member of the Red Cross Club and been very active in the SCA. This year, she currently serves as the SCA president. Mary thoroughly enjoys giving back to her community. She started working in her church's nursery as a freshman, caring for children from ages newborn to two. Through this experience, she has learned responsibility, sacrifice, and patience. She then started a summer outreach program at her church called Reaching Our City's Kids. She prides herself on being able to work with children and enjoys leading by example. Mary has also volunteered at the Peninsula Rescue Mission with her family. Mary, we are beyond proud of you and hope that you continue reaching for the stars. Congratulations.
And then, the next one is TAB High School.
You betcha. Thank you. It's my pleasure this evening to introduce a senior of the month from TAB High School and I always ask for pronunciations. Tonight's the one night I didn't and perhaps I should have. Michael, Michael Nicolave? Close enough? All right. Stand up. I believe your mom and dad, Donald and Lolita Allen are with you, so thank you for being here. Michael is a dynamic senior who has maintained a GPA of 4.3 while completing very demanding programs of study. Upon graduation, he will have completed 11 advanced placement courses. Despite such a heavy academic load, Michael has managed to contribute a great deal of additional time and effort to his school and to his community. He is a member of the National Honor Society along with several other subject-specific honor societies. Michael represented TAB High at Virginia Boise State this past summer. He has served as the DECA District 25 President and has been a National Beta Convention Leader. At TAB, Michael serves as SCA Executive Vice President. In that capacity, he recently spearheaded the organization and operation of TAB's new student orientation. Michael may also be known outside of the school by many York County residents for his efforts as Director of Operations for Granby Manor Haunted House, a widely recognized fixture during Halloween season. Boo. When Michael is present, there is never a lack of energy or direction. He has a clear vision for getting from point A to point B and he has the determination to see every project through to the end. We are extremely fortunate to have Michael as a student and we are proud to present him as TAB High School's Senior of the Month. Michael, congratulations.
Now, we're going to move on to our Student Service Awards and Dr. Shandor, I'll give you a minute to get down front. And our first Student Service Award recipient is Kathryn Lewis from Grafton High School. If you could come forward. Ms. Cataldo, your principal, is she here? It is our pleasure to recognize Kathryn Lewis as Grafton's Student Service Award recipient. Kathryn is very active in her school and community. And she gives much of her time volunteering for different events that are connected to Key Club, National Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, and her community. Kathryn has participated with the Salvation Army and their bell ringing program each holiday season and she plays an integral part to making trunk or treat a success for the Spanish Honor Society. Kathryn also gives time to her school by volunteering at different invites like open house, back-to-school night, and special events. She takes pride in giving back and helping others. Kathryn has worked with her church's Sunday School program for the last three years where she designs creative activities for students during their time in Sunday School. Her dedication to her community led her to serve as a lifeguard for a local swimming pool. During this time, she has received her Red Cross Lifeguard Certification as well as her Red Cross CPR First Aid Certification. Her passion to serve her community has led her to being named Assistant Manager this past summer at her local pool. Kathryn also cares greatly about her environment and she used this passion to start a gardening club at Grafton High School. Kathryn wanted to have a space so others could learn to love gardening and give back to the school. Kathryn is now teaming up with our Special Olympics Club to work together on the Unified Gardening Project. Kathryn balances all of her community service with her academics and has been on the straight A honor roll every quarter. Kathryn looks forward to studying aerospace engineering or mechanical engineering and plans to study law in grad school. We are pleased to recognize Kathryn tonight as our Student Service Award recipient. Congratulations. And Dr. George, you're up with Seaford Elementary.
Yes. The next Student Service Award is for Seaford Elementary, Ms. Barbara Nagel, and the student would be Holly Freeman. Come on up with the student. Holly is a second grade student at Seaford Elementary School and has always had great compassion about the world around her. If she sees something she can change for the better, she tries to figure out a way. For example, she says that if she is ever president, no one would ever go hungry and that every family should have a home. In May of 2017, Holly wanted to know what Memorial Day was all about. After learning the true meaning of this special day, she felt compelled to do something that would help soldiers and their families. She started drawing pictures to sell at the end of her driveway. The first year, she raised $20.30. This year, she continued the tradition and raised $150. Holly proudly mailed the money to the Wounded Warrior Foundation. A few weeks later, a handwritten thank you note came in the mail from the foundation praising her work and encouraging her to keep it up. The foundation also wanted her to know that no matter how small you are, you can always make a difference. Holly, we are certainly proud of you. Congratulations.
And now for the presentation from the York Foundation for Public Education presentation. I'll ask Ms. Haywood to share comments.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations to Gavin, a fifth grade student at Seaford Elementary for reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. We also would like to recognize tonight's Student Service Award recipients, Holly from Seaford Elementary and Kathryn from Grafton High, as well as our seniors, Zachary from Bruton, Abby from Grafton, Michael from TAB, and Mary from York High. Special gifts from Cookie Text and Edible Tweet are being presented tonight on behalf of the York Foundation for Public Education in partnership with their donor, Joni Fioke of Cookie Text and Edible Tweet. A Walmart gift card is also being presented on behalf of a foundation sponsor. And presenting these gifts tonight is Mrs. Kathleen Murphy, a York Foundation for Public Education Board Member. Thank you to all of you. Congratulations.
To find out information about the York Foundation for Public Education and the 501(c)(3) foundation under the community cap on the website, all the things we do, all the things we give money for, we give money away to the seniors.
We're now going to do our Community Volunteers of the Month and Grafton High School, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. If Ms. Asher, Gail Asher, would step forward along with Ms. Cataldo. It is with great pride that we recognize Gail Asher as Grafton High School's Volunteer of the Month. Gail is committed to the success of Grafton and not only making it a great place for her children, but for all students at Grafton High School. Gail plays an integral role in both our band and our PTSA. Gail has played an important leadership role in the Grafton Band over the last eight years as she has had two children active with the Grafton Band and currently serves as the secretary for the Grafton Band Boosters. There is nothing too big or too small that Gail is not willing to do. She is right there, ready to assist and chaperone any and all events, everything from riding buses to games to competitions to assessments to chaperoning trips. Gail has coordinated a ride-share program for our band students and she has taken time to create maps of where our band students live and work to help coordinate and match up students together so they can share rides. She helps to keep the inventory organized and works with other band parents to ensure the band uniforms are kept in the best possible shape and that our band students are always dressed and are looking their best. Gail's love for Grafton is not just with the band, but with our PTSA as well. She currently serves as the head of the Hospitality Committee where she coordinates ways to celebrate our teachers and students. Gail works hard to plan festive and delicious luncheons for our teachers each month and she coordinates with the PTSA to select special dates to bring the staff treats and is always looking for ways to show appreciation to our teachers. Whatever you need, Gail is right there, ready to help make things happen. And because of Gail's hard work and dedication to Grafton, she has made Grafton a better place for not only our students and our staff, but for our community as well. Thank you, Gail, for your time and dedication to Grafton and we are so pleased to honor you tonight as Grafton's Volunteer of the Month.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, and Mr. Medford.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to introduce someone that couldn't be here this evening, the Volunteer of the Month for Seaford Elementary School, so let me get Mrs. Nagel to come up, the principal. And I'm going to go ahead and bring your assistant principal up too because, well, anytime we can show off the Seaford staff, we do it, okay? So, is Mrs. Chalomo? Is that Chalomo? I know it messed that name up. Basically, Holly has volunteered at Seaford Elementary School for 12 years. She's a proud mother of Lucas, a fourth grader at Seaford, and Cooper and Olivia, who are juniors at York High School. In addition to helping in the school library each week, Holly also supports students and teachers by volunteering in classrooms and serving as the hospitality chairperson for the PTA. Holly shares that volunteering at Seaford is very rewarding. She considers the students and staff a part of her extended family. In addition to being a school volunteer, Holly also volunteers at her church and the nursery. Congratulations. We'll give her or present her the award at school maybe one day soon and thank you.
And next, we have the Virginia School Boards Association Academy Awards and when Dr. Shandor gets in place, we're going to get him to share the information for that.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Each year, the Virginia School Board Association recognizes board members across the state for their dedication, time, and hard work in improving boardsmanship skills through the VSBA meetings, conferences, board development, and training and active involvement in the association. There are five different levels, level of awards based on the points earned from July 1 through June 30. So, the awards being presented tonight are Award of Achievement and Bronze Pin to Dr. George and Mr. Medford. Do you want to hold up your awards? And the Award of Excellence and Silver Pin to Mr. Richardson and Mrs. Haywood. We can give them a round of applause. And Dr. Shandor was awarded the Award of Achievement and the Bronze Pin also.
So, at this time, the board will take a short recess so the board members can come down and meet some of the award recipients from tonight. So, we're going to take a short recess. Thank you. And our first item on the agenda is unfinished business and we have none, but the next item is Capital Projects Report. Dr. Shandor, if you'd like to share.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Somebody asked Mr. Mark Sheerhart, Associate Director of Capital Plans, to please come to the podium. He's going to present this month's Capital Project Report. Mr. Sheerhart.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor, here's your Capital Projects Report for the month of September. So, the first project I'd like to touch on is TAB Elementary School, which is where Phase 1 is very near completion. The contractors are finishing odds and ends throughout the building. They actually worked while schools were closed last week, worked during the day. They have to finish programming the LED lighting that's installed in the school and are in the process of testing and adjusting the HVAC systems. We're in the process of generating a punch list this week for the contractor to take care of. We're waiting for input from the teachers and from the staff there to put into this punch list for the contractors. The final completion for this, for Phase 1 is scheduled for September 30th. That's when they should have all these little bits and pieces done. And Phase 2 is scheduled to start next summer, June 17th, 2019. Talking about Phase 2 here, Phase 2 is, they will finish installing the metal roof, which you see in the summer, the beginning of it, they've put the upper roof on and the front roof there. They had to finish that over the cafeteria area and the rest of the school. They also need to finish replacing exterior windows and frames. Some of these windows are the original single-pane windows. They are in some original window frames from 1976. They also are going to replace casework next year. What the plan was is this last, this last phase, Phase 1, was to get everything done above the ceiling. So, they got the difficult stuff, difficult things done this summer. And so, next summer, when we go back, everything is going to be below the ceiling. It should be a lot less, lot less difficult. So, they plan to replace casework and sinks in the classrooms next summer. They replace the interior doors. Again, these are some of the original doors in this building and they are, they are in rough shape, so we want to go in there and change them out and replace them, put them, some nice wooden doors throughout the building. They also want to install LED lights in the fire sprinkler system, continue that fire sprinkler system. We put it in the main part of the building, the original part of the building, this summer. And we're going to extend that into the sixth classroom addition, the cafeteria and the gymnasium next summer. They plan to also paint the cafeteria and the gymnasium and also replace the gymnasium floor next summer. So, it's not going to be a small project, but it's not going to be as intensive as it was this year. So, this is just some before and after pictures here. I thought I'd show you before the renovation, this is what the canopy looked like, and this is what it looks like now. This is a massive change to that massive updated outlook, updated look to that school. Here's the interior, new entrance with the security vestibule. You see the security doors in front of you here and on the left-hand side, you see the door going into the main offices. Here's a picture I took during the renovation. You can see the front of the building, the brown siding and the brown roof that was on the building before. There was some green window frames around the front windows and so we took all that out. We placed, we placed it all with some, some light gray siding on the front and the roof is actually a charcoal gray. And then you can see here that it has bright aluminum frames around the windows now instead of the old ugly green ones. Here's what the tile used to look like in the restrooms. You can see it was 76 and it was definitely dated, definitely old-looking, and it looks like this today. So, it's very much updated, bright and clean, bright and clean and fresh-looking. The media center had a low roof, a low ceiling in it before and we had the opportunity this time to go ahead and raise the ceiling. So, we raised the ceiling up to 12 feet in that, in that library and you can see we put lighted soffit all the way around to really brighten the area up, make it look more open, more inviting, and a much nicer place to go read at and study. The next project I'd like to touch on is Grafton Middle and High School. This is, we're in the process of doing construction documents for this, this project. The, we have been having multiple meetings with the principals and staff at both schools there to ensure proper functionality in the redesign of the main offices. We're coordinating with the architects and engineers to make sure we cover every asset, facet of this building. This is not a total renovation of the building, it's only the front office area and replacing heating and air conditioning and a few other things I'll touch on in just a minute. We're also investigating replacement of this existing small generator there at the school. The plan is to look at, well, the plan, the, the idea is to replace that small generator with several large generators that can carry the entire building. Those pieces are not, that puzzle are not complete yet. We're still meeting with the engineers to figure out exactly how all that's going to work. The substantial completion for this project is for, is scheduled for August 15th next summer and the final completion will be September 15th. So, some of the things this project focuses on are the main office reorientations. We're going to rotate the offices so they face the main hallway. I have some renderings here, I'll show you in just a second. They're going to install a security vestibule at both, at both entrances to the main building, main schools, the high school and then middle school, as well as where the attendance office is for the high school. There's a set of doors there. We're going to put a security vestibule there as well, since that is a high-access area. So, the HVAC system will be replaced. The cooling tower is going to be changed out. The cooling towers, right now, there's only two there. We're going to put three on the roof. Right now, if one cooling tower goes down, we're, the building is hurting for heating and air conditioning, or air conditioning. And so, we're going to go ahead and put three towers up there, so if one fails, we still have two running. And we can also do maintenance on a tower while we keep two running. Potentially, we, we'd like to replace all the lighting in the building with LED lights. This is an expensive proposition, but it will cut the power used for lights in half. So, it'll cut, cut it down to 50 percent of what we're using now to light the building now. And I expect it even more than that because some of the lights we leave, relieve running in the building 24/7 and we won't do that in the future. Lastly, the main switchboard, we, in our, in our latest projects, we've been replacing the switchboards in the buildings. They're dated, they're old, some of them have, are having issues. So, we want to replace the switchboard at Grafton Complex before it does give us problems. And also, again, the generator replacement, we're looking at investigating that. So, those are some of the facets of that project. Here's a picture of what the high school entrance looks like now. And here's a computer-generated image of what the, what the security vestibule will look like. These are doors at the end of, at the end of the short hallway here going past the, you see the end right here where Grafton High School sign is at? That's where the, this set of doors would be at. And this whole red wall then would be gone. It would all be glass. You can see here on the right-hand, left-hand side, you can see the glass wall there that would place the red. You can see also, here's a door on the left-hand side to enter the main offices. Here's another view of that. So, you can see on this, on this slide here, you can see the door going into the main offices and then you can see the, the security doors on the right-hand side. Now, these, these pictures are dull, they're not bright as the, as the, as the building is now and they're just renderings generated by the computer. We're going to make them brighter. It's not going to look like this when you walk into the building. You can see here, we've also put a slight arch in the ceiling and we plan to raise the ceiling, we can figure out, we can get the ceiling up two, two feet higher in the entranceway, so it's going to open it up and make it a lot nicer looking. So, that's the high school. And then for the middle school, this is what the middle school looks like now. Again, the red wall there, we're going to take that red wall out and put in a glass wall there for the front of the offices as we're rotating the offices around to face this entrance. And again, where the sign is at here, right here is where those new, new security doors will go. This is a rendering again of that. You can see again the, the office there on the left-hand side. And then here's another view of the offices there. It's a slightly different setup in the offices between the high school and the middle school. It can't be, we, because, because of the walls and the layout in the offices, we can't make them mirror images. They're, they're slightly different. Again, you can see here on the right-hand side, the security doors. And so, some of the projects that we're working on right now, designing is a new elementary school that, right now, we're just about ready to enter into the design development phase. The preliminary phase is closing out. We just finally need the final approval on the drawings, or the preliminary drawing. York High School roof replacement will be a two-summer project, somewhat similar to what we did at Grafton Complex. We had to cut the roof back just a little bit and then coat the entire roof. After we do those repairs along the edges of the roof at York High, then we'll coat the entire roof, just similar to what we did at Grafton Complex. Coventry Elementary Security Vestibule and Mount Vernon Elementary Security Vestibule, these are, they will actually be these are, we'll actually be doing four security vestibules this coming summer, these two schools, and Grafton Complex, both schools, both sides there, or, and, so, actually, five security vestibules. And it only leaves several schools, at least Tab High School and Queens Lake will be the last two schools that don't have security vestibules. York Middle, or YRA is part of York Middle, and it has one at the front of York Middle, but there is not one back by York River Academy. So, we're still looking at that right there, how to handle that, that situation in the back of that building. Dare Elementary School and Mount Vernon Breezeway Enclosures, these are the last two schools that the breezeway, breezeways needed to be enclosed. All the other ones are done. Coventry, McGruder, Dare, and Seaford, and Seaford are all done. It's just these last two here that need to be done. So, we're working on the design for these right now with the architects, and hopefully you have the final plans in the near future. We are meeting with the principals on this Friday to discuss colors at Coventry, Mount Vernon, and Dare. And that's my last slide for this evening. Do you have any questions for me?
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Sheerhart, for that detailed report. We appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Now, we're gonna move into citizen comments. Public participation in board meetings. I'll call up anyone who signed up to speak. The school board provides a public comment period for the public to comment on topics that are germane to the business of the school board. The school board expects, expects each speaker to be courteous, modeling for our students in how we can respect, respectfully disagree with others' views. We ask that speakers address their comments to the entire board and not to one individual board member, nor the superintendent, a staff member, or the audience. Speakers will present their comments from the podium, and each speaker may speak up to three minutes. A timer is visible to the speaker from the podium, and speakers should conclude their remarks when the red light comes on. And when you come up, if you would please state your name and address clearly, and then the timer will start after you do that. So, our first speaker is Pam Pouchot.
My name is Pam Pouchot. I reside at 103 Kimberly Court, Yorktown. It has come to my attention that the York County Schools do not teach genocide, except in passing. Neither do we teach comparative religion. Most wars are fought to protect those who are oppressed, to acquire more geography and the power that goes with it, or for religious superiority. The Rohingya in Myanmar, the Nour in South Sudan, the Christians in Yazidi in Iraq and Syria, the Christians and Muslims in the Central African Republic, and the Darfur's in Sudan are just a few of the current examples of active genocide. The crime of genocide is defined in international law in the Convention on Prevention and the Punishment of Genocide. Article II states, "In the present convention, genocide means any of the following acts committed with the intent to destroy in whole or in part a national, ethnical, racial, or religious group. As such, killing members of this group, causing serious bodily or mental harm to members of the group, deliberately inflicting on the group conditions of life calculated to bring about its physical destruction in whole or in part, imposing measures intended to prevent births within the group, and forcibly transferring children of the group to another group." The ten stages of genocide are classification, which is separating people into us and them by ethnicity, race, religion, or nationality; symbolization, giving names or other symbols to create a dehumanizing classification; discrimination, a dominant group using laws, customs, and political behavior to deny citizens' rights, voting rights, or citizenship; dehumanization, hate groups deny the humanity of the other groups, calling them animals, vermin, et cetera; organization by the state or militia and are often labeled as necessary counterinsurgency measures; polarization, extreme drive, extremists drive groups apart with propaganda and legally rescinding civil rights and liberties; preparation, training troops indoctrinating the populace with fears of the victim group while using euphemisms such as counterterrorism and self-defense to justify their actions; persecution, physically segregating victims, depriving them of basic needs and property, and separating children from their parents; nine, extermination, including rape and murder of all the chosen group; and ten, denial, which is removing all evidence of that genocide. The only way to prevent genocide is to educate our children so they can recognize it in its earliest stages. As with so much evil in the world, it is often a fait accompli, leaving one with no option but to accept the results. Our children need to understand, at least, the major religions of the world, learn to see them not as a threat to their own belief systems, but as a right for all to practice their own religious beliefs without hindrance or fear. I strongly urge the board to consider requiring all students to study these subjects to make them better citizens and to help them to promote, promote justice throughout the world. The U.S. has just admonished the International Criminal Court, which may take action against atrocities committed in Afghanistan, to lay off on any Americans who may have participated. The current administration vilifies Mexicans as murderers and rapists. Muslims are forbidden entry because they are terrorists, and Hispanic children are separated from their parents. African-Americans are often shot by police without cause. White supremacy is on the rise. We are at risk for genocide if we remain silent and ignorant. I urge you to act. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, the alarm wasn't working. You went over a few seconds, but you're fine. No, 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 it wasn't your fault. It was, the alarm didn't, didn't sound, but you got an extra 30 seconds, I think. But, thank you. So, next up, we have Suzanne Hagdorn.
Hagdorn.
Okay. If you'd please state your name and address clearly, please, and then the timer will start. Thank you.
Yes, I'm Dr. Suzanne C. Hagdorn of 605 Queensbury Lane, Williamsburg, Virginia, a residence located in the county of York. I am a York County resident, homeowner, and taxpayer since 2004, a Williamsburg-area resident since 1997, when I came to the College of William and Mary as an assistant professor of English and have taught ever since. Since September of 2016, I've been the parent of a York County School Division student when my child began kindergarten at McGruder Elementary. For first grade last year, my child began his studies at Waller Mill and just started second grade after Labor Day. Sorry. Okay. Sorry. Perhaps some of you may remember me from a January meeting when I came to speak on the issue of high school start times, both as the parent of a future high schooler and educator of students who've recently graduated from high school at the College of William and Mary. At that time, because I was dissatisfied with the school board's choice to shelve the continuing discussion of school start times, I announced my intention to run for school board seat in the 2019 election. I plan to file my petition in January of 2019. I also express my concerns about the lack of sufficient recess in York County elementary schools, as my child received only 15 minutes of recess at McGruder during kindergarten and only 20 minutes at Waller Mill last year. As you know, many parents are concerned about the recess issue, and I very much hope that the survey data recently gathered will support the expansion of recess time for our students sooner rather than later, as it's vital for their health and well-being. And also, as Mr. Anderson pointed out at the work session immediately preceding this reading, correlates with higher scores on standardized tests by which school districts are judged. I look forward to hearing further reports from the recess committee and hope that the positive changes to increase recess begun by many school districts in northern Virginia at the beginning of the school year will eventually be implemented here in York County. But I came to speak today not just about recess, but about the norms and protocols document adopted by this board at the August 27th school meeting. As a parent of a current elementary schooler learning about civics, I was very put off by the majority of the board at this meeting, as it seemed that a number of board members were teaming up to take another board member to task for his activism and understanding of parental concerns. I respectfully suggest that anyone who was not here then and is a parent of a York County School District child, watch that meeting on YouTube and decide which school board members are more in touch with today's parents, the one who took action on the recess issue, or those who scolded and tried to shame him for taking parental concerns seriously. Frankly, I was also appalled that a board member, whom I shall not name, called parental activism on recess a distraction and acted annoyed that parents were calling with comments. I would respectfully remind the board, who pays their $750 a month stipends, not Dr. Shandor, but York County taxpayers, many of whom are also parents of children in the York County School District. And so, as a York County parent and taxpayer, I've exercised my rights as a citizen and made this, the activities of the board and the school division, the topic of two Freedom of Information Act requests. And frankly, I would not have done this had the York County School District been more generous in sharing what is public information with parents. But since press releases about the recess issue have been pretty thin on the ground, I felt the need to do so, and I will be sharing this information with members of the press and public in the York County School Division's sunside Facebook page that I set up last week.
Thank you, Ms. Hagdorn. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on to matters by the board, and we'll start down at the end with Mr. Medford. Any comments you have?
I just have one comment. Actually, it's, we had a presentation this evening on academic successes of YCSD. And first of all, the hard work, and I know the staff hears this over and over and over again, but the hard work that went into presenting that information this evening, I can't imagine how much work y'all had to put into that, to, to prepare for just digging into the weeds of all that data, to bring something to the board and to the community about our school division. But YCSD rocks it. I mean, we looked at that data, and yes, there's, there's areas of improvement, and Mrs. Haywood, she focuses on, on those, and we all do. And, but I think we always look for improvement all the time. And it's, it's interesting how little pockets will pop up in little areas where it becomes something that we use as a focal point to figure out what's going on, and staff really does a fantastic job diving into how to do some corrective things, and what's new, and what's research-based or best practices or something new that's out there, collaborating with universities and just different programs to help our students. But YCSD rocks it. The leadership of this board, our superintendent, right down to our cabinet, the boots on the ground, our wonderful, fantastic teachers and Paris, I mean, everybody there that works in those buildings, the success of our students is driven by that. And tonight was a example of just the rubber hit the road. I mean, this is why we are, YCSD. And we're always looking for ways to improve it, but good golly day, it was a lot of fantastic data points this evening that this community really needs to pay attention to and be very proud of, because our teachers, I mean, as I say, our staff, we got some, we, we just got a bunch of good people that do a bunch of good things, and our students, we recognize that this evening. So, those kind of things, kind of, it's like the bucket of water in the, in the face kind of thing for board members sometimes, because we do so much, and we're distracted by so many different things, because there's so much going on that we have to make decisions on or be advised of. And there's more to it than most people in the community will ever know unless they actually sit on the board. But when those kind of presentations are made, it makes all the difference in the world for this board member, and, and it makes me think why I love what I do here. So, I'll leave it with that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Medford. Mr. Anderson?
I can't follow that, but I do publicly want to thank Ms. Skinner and her staff for your briefing tonight and the efforts of the committee, the recess committee. I enjoyed the presentation tonight. I'm looking forward to seeing the data, to see what the parents and the teachers had to say about recess times, if anything. But other than that, you know, we rock. I don't, I don't know really what else to say.
Absolutely.
You know? Just a side note, I will, Dr. Shandor will be sending you a list of schools I want to visit over the next few weeks, so be on the lookout for that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Ms. Haywood?
Thank you. It's like we're starting school all over again. We were here for, what, about four days, three days? We left and came back, so it's almost really like starting the school year over. But we're looking, again, forward to a fantastic school year. Again, I want to say thanks to the staff. We had a lot of information presented this evening, a lot of numbers crunching. As I told them, I'm not a numbers person, but it, a lot of real good information and how we use it and move forward with that. So, I thank them for that. I had the opportunity to go be with Dr. Shandor as we toured some schools in the Bruton District. Couple of days after school started, I missed Waller Mill, but I met him at McGruder and then to Queens Lake and then to Bruton High. And it was, it was a fun day. We were at McGruder, one of the teachers had just gone through a government class talking about who your school board representatives are, who your board supervisor representatives are. And as I walked in the class, he said, "You remember the day we did this, like, this lesson? Well, that person is here. Do you remember who she is?" And one little boy stood up and pointed and said, guy as far as Barbara, but he couldn't remember the last name. But it was a fun, it was a fun day. So, I thank them for that. At the same time, at the last work session, we received this pamphlet on the strategic plan for fiscal year 18 through 22. And I know it's been out there before, but it's another very nice little handout just to have around to, to see what the school division is doing. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And Dr. George?
Yeah. You know, it is the beginning. We haven't had a lot of days in school, obviously, so I don't have a tremendous amount to, to report. I would like to just kind of echo, you know, my appreciation for everything that staff and the teachers in York County School Division does. It makes me incredibly proud as a board member to serve on a board for a division that works as hard as it does. And I just, we just appreciate everything you do and to all the teachers out there. Last month, unfortunately, we had a little bit of a lively session up here, and some things were said. And I think those of you that know me personally hopefully feel that that's maybe a little bit out of character for me, but I have to say things when I, when I feel like something needs to be said, I, I have to say it. So, I want to follow up on that tonight and just basically tell you, Mr. Anderson, I think you have everything that it takes to be a very good board member, and I think a very effective board member. You're smart, you're inquisitive, and I don't, I don't want to take that away from you. I, I think you are gonna do great things, okay? Little rocky road here. Any board that comes together has to learn to grow together. And, but I just want to follow up with my comments last month, even though I meant what I said, because I have to, like I said, I gotta say what's on my heart and what's on my mind. However, we had a nice discussion afterwards, and I, I think you have, I'm trying to think of the right mix of what it takes to be a very effective board member. So, I'm hoping we can all encourage each other and bring out the best in, in each other, okay? The only other thing I would like to say is, is happy anniversary to my wife, 25 years. This is a lady who has put up with me for 25 years. She's a saint. Can I get an amen, Vic? That's all I've got for tonight. Thank you for allowing me to.
And Dr. George, you attended New Horizons meeting, didn't you? Have that this past week, or last week?
No, that was, pardon me?
Was that the first week of school?
Yeah. I think I.
We had, we just had a work session, so you didn't get a chance to mention that about New Horizons.
Yes, but I think I talked about that last time. Because, Mr. Roberts?
That's okay, moving on.
Twice.
Moving on.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Great meeting.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure we covered it. I think you may have, you may have.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we'll move on, and I was able to tour a few schools the first week of school with Dr. Shandor. It was Coventry Elementary, Dare Elementary, Grafton Middle, Grafton High. It was real exciting to see the, especially the new teachers who were here that were so excited and were doing an awesome job in their classrooms and teaching. So, I was able to see that. A teacher was showing me a school activity, you know, getting the kids, you know, up and moving around so they're not just sitting in a desk all day, and, you know, so they're going around the room doing things and keeping them mobile. So, it was really exciting to see some of the innovations that these teachers have. And the most impressive part was the Maker Space that they have at Mount Vernon Elementary that I went to last Monday. That's a program we're gonna hear about and accent on academics, so I don't want to steal anything from them. But these kids are even starting to learn coding in kindergarten, which is something that I learned in one of the conferences that I went to. So, I'm excited to see that we're looking at that and, and trying that through our, our division. So, anyway, after that, that's all I have to talk about. We're gonna move on to financial matters, and Ms. Haywood, do you have that?
I do have financial matters this month. Certification for approval of claims, the total amount, $5,264,881. Want to just walk through some of the categories with you. Under the area of instructional-related expense expenditures totaling $169,800, and included the payments to a number of areas, for classroom furniture, to Verco for William &amp; Mary, for our cost for graduations at William &amp; Mary, for New Horizons for tuition, Wonder Workshop for STEM supplies, and LEGO Education for classroom supplies. Payments for technology-related items totaling $424,500 payable to Kronos. Payments for technology-related items totaling $424,500 payable to Kronos, 2X, X2 Development for the student, renewal for the student information system, Cox Cable for services in July and August, for Blackboard, for Tyler Technologies. Quite a few of these expenditures are renewals as we begin our school year, and you're going to find a lot of expenditures are for small things that were done over the summer, construction and so forth. There was one payment to Sodexo totaling $18,163, and that was for food service salaries for July. Payments related to construction and maintenance projects totaling $237,250 to Hudson and Associates for the Grafton Complex, to ACES and Mid-Atlantic for TAB Elementary, for Pembroke Construction for our repair and replacement of sidewalks at Queens Lake Middle School. Payments related to administration totaling $344,639. Payments to the Virginia Municipal League for general liability and property insurance, and Virginia Association of Counties, VACO. So again, these are payments for administration, for our liability, for our insurance. There's one other thing that's in your packet that I just want to highlight. I know we got a long ways to go. It was mentioned under construction is that we made a payment to Mosley Architects for the new elementary schematic design, so I was happy, of course, to see that there. As we move on to the operating budget, under consideration of approval of financial reports for revenue, there was no significant changes for local revenues in August. The state revenues in August of this year are $475,000 higher when compared to August of 2017. This anticipated increase in funding is due to the increase in student enrollment and other increases as a result of the state re-benchmarking process. The state sales tax for August 2018, the taxes are about $800,000 less than in August of 2017. This is due to the timing in which the state transfers sales tax to the school division. And federal revenue for August 2018 is up by more than $360,000 from August of 2017. This is due to the fact that impact aid revenues are not received on a regular schedule, so amounts will differ month to month due to the timing in which payments are made by the federal government. That was revenue. These are our expenditures for the operating budget. Expenditures for operations and maintenance for August 2018 are approximately $170,000 higher than in August of 2017. This is due to the timing in which summer projects were completed and paid. For August 2018, there are no significant changes in local revenues for the food service fund. Again, I'm sorry, moving to the food service. Incumbrances for food service operations are $2.3 million higher in August 2018 than in August 2017. This is due to the timing in which the Sodexo purchase order was encumbered in the financial system. In 2017, the purchase order was not encumbered until September. And lastly, looking at a Resolution 18-46, a resolution authorizing a specific procurement. We have a resolution requiring the board's approval authorizing procurement for more than $50, and there are two items on the resolution. The first requisition is for $380,000 to Citrix for our annual network license, and the second is $52,033 to FLIR for our annual camera software service, and that, I think, is the infrared piece that we are using, the company that we use. So unless there are questions with that, I move approval of the budget for this month.
Second.
All right. Ms. Ford?
A motion was made by Mrs. Haywood and seconded by Dr. George to approve financial matters as listed. You may cast your vote.
Go back and find it.
And the motion passed five to zero.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ford. We're going to move on to the consent calendar, and I'm going to go over the list briefly. While I'm going over it, I'm going to give the board a chance to look over the personnel actions because that was not posted until late. I had an opportunity to look at it during the meeting quickly because it wasn't much, but I do want to give everybody a chance to look at that, make sure they had a chance to look at it. So we'll have approval of personnel actions, approval of donations in the amount of $7,915.73, and that's the only two items we have on the consent calendar tonight. Did everyone have a chance to look over the personnel actions?
Yes.
Okay, good. So at this time, I'll take a motion.
I move approval of consent calendar as presented.
Okay.
Okay. A motion was made by Mrs. Haywood and seconded by Mr. Metford to approve the consent calendar as listed. You may cast your vote. The motion to approve the consent calendar as listed passed five to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. And now we're going to move on to our action items, and this will be approval of a proclamation for bullying prevention awareness month, October 2018. I'd like Dr. Shandor to share some comments about this.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Bullying affects all youth, including those who are bullied, those who bully others, and those who see bullying going on. Bullying can happen in any number of places, contexts, or locations. It is important for parents, students, teachers, coaches, and school administrators to be aware of bullying and to encourage discussion of the problem as a school community. Let the month of October 2018 be recognized as bullying prevention month with the intention that the issue of bullying and its prevention be discussed in all York County schools during that time.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Is there a motion to approve the proclamation for bullying prevention awareness month?
Move approval.
Second. Good to see this.
Yes. Ms. Ford?
Yes. A motion was made by Mr. Metford and seconded by Mrs. Haywood to approve the proclamation for bullying prevention month. You may cast your vote. The motion passed five to zero to pass the proclamation for bullying prevention month.
And just to recap for those that are watching from home, we have a new Board Doc software that we're using for our voting, so it shows up on our computer, and it'll show up on the screen too typically. We were having some technical difficulties earlier with that, so as we go through the year, I'm sure we'll get more proficient with that and better with that. So next, we have a consideration of a motion to approve authorizing the superintendent to create a full-time temporary position to serve as project coordinator for Phase II implementation of the Munis Human Resources and Payroll Modules. So, Dr. Shandor?
I don't have any other information to report this evening. It's based on the presentation from Mr. Bowen at the work session last Monday. If you need more information, I can certainly have Mr. Bowen come to the podium.
Hello, thanks.
Is there a motion?
I move motion.
Second.
A motion was made by Dr. George and seconded by Mrs. Haywood to approve the, authorizing the superintendent to create a full-time temporary position to serve as project coordinator for the Phase II implementation of the Munis HR and payroll modules. You may vote, please.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. So next, we have the approval of the amended board norms and protocols. As you remember, we started this back in June. We discussed it at a meeting, but we wanted to discuss it further, so we went into a work session. So the board got the sample that was, or the changes, I'm sorry, that was put out based on our changes from the work session. But there was a mistake or some clarification, I think, on the first page, the part that was in red that says, "The board will discuss the request, and an agreeable timeframe for the completion is to be established." I think the wording should have been, "The board will establish an agreeable timeframe for the completion." Is that everyone's understanding?
Yes.
Okay. Did you get that change, Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So that would be.
I'm sorry for interrupting, Mr. Richardson. Can you read that one more time? I just want to make sure I have clarification.
Yes. "The board will establish an agreeable timeframe for completion."
Okay. My computer went down, I can't pull it up.
Right.
The one that is loaded is not seen.
There you go.
No, because the one that's loaded is the one that came.
Correct.
Chairman, can we get, can we bring this to the point for discussion? A motion?
I move approval.
I'll second it.
Second.
Now we in discussion mode.
Okay. Absolutely.
Yeah, there was some wordsmith on that particular paragraph. I just don't remember what it was.
Right. And I was, Ms. Haywood refreshed my memory on that, and there was some, that was the, the whole reason it was brought up was because of those changes. And the only other change was on page three about the notice that members should call the superintendent. We changed that from a week to 24 to 48 hours. They were the only two changes that we discussed making.
If you recall in the, if I may.
Yes.
The discussion was if a board member wanted, the first sentence was fine because whatever one board member gets, whatever one board member requests, all board members will get that information. The other part was if a board member asked for something and it was a major project, does the whole board have to approve it before going forward? And I think we talked about if there was a big project and it took some time and it wasn't priority, we would set a timetable in getting that request completed. Not that we wouldn't do it, but we would set some timetable. That's my understanding of that.
But the request itself would be discussed, and then if it's a large project, the item would be discussed as, okay, this is something that we want the staff to spend some time on, and then come up with a timeframe at that point to have staff bring us back. Is that what you're, that was my understanding, was if it's an item or a subject or a project or something huge that's going to shift policy, shift decision, shift something in YCSD that is going to require a considerable amount of time, the superintendent would have to let us know if it's going to be a considerable amount of time.
Right, right.
Then we discuss that as a board, green light it by majority, and then the timeframe would be set by.
If you still want the board in that, that's fine. That was my point of saying. That was not how it was, I thought, discussed that night. If you still want that piece in, that the board has to approve a large request, so be it. What I walked away from and what I saw, I thought were a little, were different, and that was my disappointment of clarification.
I just know past practice, I know we've been through, we already talked about all this, but I know that in past practice, for the years and years and years I've been on this board, that if anything substantially that was going to shift the way we do things, we always discussed it before we moved with it because it was big, it was huge. It was, a lot of data was going to have to be gathered. We needed to be educated on what that shift was going to be, so we needed the information, and a timeline had to be established. Sometimes it took, you know, like the example of when we went from our alternative school to York River Academy, that was a major shift. It took a lot of time, but we all had to buy into that decision before, and I wrote a note to it, but what good came out of it was great.
And just the point is, if that's what we want to say, I'm fine. I just want clarification as to where our discussion was and what's on paper. If we are okay with what's on paper, that's fine.
Well, let's ask Mr. Anderson because it was his, it was your concern in that one part. What was your understanding?
Yeah, so my original concern was the word must have board consensus, the power of the word must, which means it's mandatory.
And we took all that out.
Took all that out.
Right.
And I walked away from here with the same thing that Ms. Haywood did, is that it would be reworded to read that the board would work together and generate a timeline for completion, working, of course, with the superintendent.
Right. But I have to agree too. I mean, even if we put that in there, we're still as a board going to discuss it.
No, I get, nobody's disputing that.
So I guess the way it's written, "The board will discuss the request in an agreeable timeframe," will be established. I personally don't see any issue, but I just want to make sure the other board members, if they're good with the way it was or with the amended.
Do you see any issues, Ms. Haywood?
No. And again, I'm okay with this. As I said earlier, it wasn't, I looked at my scribble notes from before, and it was worded a little differently. If we are okay with what it is now, I'm fine. I just need a clarification for where I left the previous meeting to what I saw here.
Okay. So can I ask, just for a point of clarification for what it's going to read in its final stages? Because I want to be sure that.
It'll stay here then. Are we changing, are we going to leave it where it is and highlight in red?
So. That's what we've been talking about.
Right. So it seems like we're going to leave it highlighted in red.
So if a request is made for information from a board member, then does the request, is the whole board copied on the request? Is it discussed by the board?
No, only if it's a lengthy.
Okay. I just want to make sure I have clarification so I know how to direct staff and use their time the best.
Well, if you look at the, if you look at the protocols that we're going to adopt, I mean, I would think that if a significant request was going to be made, if it's not made here publicly, then each board member should be a part of that request, maybe as a CC, you know? Is that what you're asking?
Yes. I just want it to be clear so I have a clear direction from the board to, you know, because part of our, part of the concerns I raised at the work session when we had this discussion was the information requested obviously should be related to the strategic plan and all of those types of things. I think the issue you have is in seven years or however long, when you have a different board, if these protocols are in place, and every board member has a different thing that they're going to ask for, then the staff, staff time becomes, it's not supportive of the schools, and they can't do the work of the schools because there's five different agendas. And I'm not saying that now, but I'm saying down the line, that's, to me, the power of a board.
Well, it would be my hope that whoever's making the request would at least give the chairman, the vice chairman, the courtesy of discussing it beforehand, if not each member of the board. I mean, that would be my unwritten expectation.
Absolutely.
And I just want to, this goes to our policy, BBAA file, it's, the last sentence is, "A school board member," and this is in policies, "A school board member shall have no authority or duties except such as may be assigned to them by the school board as a whole." So with our policy, the way it's written would match to this, correct? Where a discussion would be had before.
I'm fine with this.
The school board as a whole gets.
I think we've agreed, everybody's good with the way it was.
Call the question.
If, and if it becomes an issue down the road, nothing says we can't modify it, so I think just have something in stone.
I would hope this would be part of our board annual evaluations, that we revisit the normal protocols on a yearly basis when we do our board evaluation.
Correct, correct. That's the plan. So there was a motion already and a second.
I called it already.
Okay. And was the motion to, I just want to make sure we're clear on this.
It's what we read.
Is what we read in the red or what I added, the way I read?
The red. What we read and what is in the red is what we.
I just want to make sure y'all are on the same understanding of the motion, that the motion was to accept the amended board protocols as they're currently written with the red highlighted changes.
Yes.
And no different changes.
Yes.
Okay. So there's been a motion and a second, Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Yes, a motion was made by Mrs. Haywood. Yes, a motion was made by Mrs. Haywood and seconded by Mr. Metford to approve the board norms and protocols as written. You may vote, please. The motion has passed five to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. So we have no policy discussions, no first readings or second readings, and next we have the report of the superintendent, Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. We've enjoyed a beginning, beginning of a new school year filled with unexpected weather challenges, but hopefully we're on track now, and I'd like to remind you to take time to visit your school during back-to-school nights. Those are all in process, so you can be involved and engage with your, with your student and the teachers. I also want to thank Neil Morgan and Chief Kapczynski for their leadership and collaboration during the storm. I know we didn't receive much in terms of the storm, but our first responders and other community resources met twice a day every day while we were out during the governor's mandatory evacuation of Zone A. TAB High was also set up as a shelter, and I was really impressed with their leadership and collaboration. Recapping the first week of school, I was able to get into all 19 schools. I want to thank all of our operations staff for their work over the summer preparing 1.8 million square feet of schools for our students. We welcomed several new staff members as well as new students to YCSD, and I'm looking forward to a fantastic year. I'm looking forward to visiting classes, reading to students, and connecting with our students and teachers. This concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor.
I would like to say one thing. These two guys in the back, the IT guys, I think you're here in case we screw up. I think. And, you know, they sit, they sit here in these meetings and listen to all this in the event that something happens to us up here, so thank you.
Yes, thank you.
We appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. George, for recognizing. So we're in need of a closed session before we adjourn, but we're going to go into a closed session and adjourn from there.
I move that the York County School Board will meet in closed session to pursue a Virginia Code 2.2-3711A7 of the Virginia Freedom Reformation Act to consult with legal counsel regarding actual or probable litigation.
Second.
Ms. Ford?
Yes, a motion was made by Mr. Metford and seconded by Mrs. Haywood for the board to meet in closed session to consult with legal counsel regarding actual or probable litigation, and you may vote, please.
Ms. Ford?
Yep, you can.
Oh, you shut it down. Okay, I will vote for you unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Because I was gearing to close it down in court myself.
Thank you.
We're getting used to this. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you.
That's pretty good.